All right, we are back from closed session. We'll call the meeting back in order. And at this time, our clerk will read any actions taken in closed session.
Yes, on a six to zero vote with trustee Jamal absent, the board approved a three-month general leave with benefits to a classified employee at Saddleback College. Then, on a six to zero vote with trustee Jamal absent, the board adopted an amended resolution to not renew an educational administrator at Irvine Valley College unless the employee accepts a one-year contract. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please rise, and trustee Jay will lead us in the invocation.
Could we please have a moment of silence for the people of the Philippines? Since our last board meeting on November 8th, 4,000 people were killed, 1,200 are still missing, and 18,000 are badly injured. In recognition of the needs of these people, please let us have a moment of silence. Thank you.
And trustee Lang will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me as we salute the flag to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of what is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have no resolutions tonight, but we do have some commendations from both Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College. And we'll start with Irvine Valley College. And President Rockmore.
Thank you, President Padberg, and Board of Trustees, and Chancellor. It's my honor to congratulate Kale Kramer, advisor, and his model United Nations team of students for their successful competitions at the National Model United Nations Conference held in Washington, DC. The team competed against 80 different colleges and universities across the United States. And the team took home a total of nine awards, including top honors for outstanding delegation. The team won two top delegation awards, research awards, including outstanding position papers for the respective committees, and outstanding committee awards. Please join me in congratulating and presenting certificates to the Model UN team of IVC. Okay, first the advisor, Kale Kramer. Second, Paul Ajon. Did I pronounce that correctly? Stephen Brander. David Brown. Sharam Farooqi. Danielle Hoby. She's not here? Let me flip these, it's got inverted. Theo Hunt. Lauren Kim. Goes quickly. Irvine Krishnan. Elisa Loop. Kelsey Mader. This is a very large team apparently. Audrey Mini. Rachel Lucho. Gibran Samala, Samla, excuse me. And finally Christina Tegler. I'd like to congratulate the entire team.
And our President Burnett from Saddleback College has notified us that we'll be continuing the presentation for his students. I guess there was some issue with the timing. So now, do we have any public comments? Okay, very good. Before going to oral reports, we're going to advance three items, 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3, because we have outside auditors here, and we'd like to accommodate them. So with that, I'll turn the 6.1 over to Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
I'm going to have Executive Director Kim McCord introduce our auditing firm, who will write a brief overview of 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to introduce our lead auditor, or actually owner of the company, Kristi White Associates, who is auditing us this year. This is the first year for this firm for us. Kristi?
Thank you, Kim, and good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, Board of Trustees. It's been really a pleasure working with your staff. Our first year on the engagement, a very cooperative and a very positive audit result. So the reports that you have in front of you provide our independent auditor's opinion on the financial statements of the district, and then there's individual reports for each of the foundations, and then the retiree OPEB trust. The financial statements for the college district include not only all of the funds of the district, but also your federal funds, and there's a single audit that we do, and then all of the state funding that you receive is also subject to many different tests of compliance. So when looking in your audit report, you'll see that there are several different auditor's opinions. The first opinion on the financial statements, we had no adjustments to your financial statement. So the report that you submit to the State of California on the 311 reporting document, no adjustments were made, which is excellent, and we provided you with the best opinion that you can receive. We used to call it an unqualified opinion. They've changed that language recently. We now call it unmodified, but it's the best opinion that you can receive. On the federal side, we audited your student financial aid, as well as a national science grant, and in doing that work, we also are rendering the highest level of opinion that you can receive. We had no exceptions in the area of federal compliance. And then in the area of state compliance, we had one relatively minor item related to contracts for some of the instructional teachers over at the beauty academy and college, and the requirement to have those instructional contracts documented and in place. And so they've already corrected that. You'll see that in the response to that finding. So we only had one finding, which is very good. We followed up on the prior year findings and recommendations and made sure that those had been satisfactorily taken care of, and they were as well. Financially, I mean, I think fortunately, we're kind of on an upturn here in the state of California, and so financially, we did not have any concerns. And in fact, you know, with the increase through Prop 30 and the property taxes, there's actually, you know, some positive trends going on. You were also able to pay down your early retirement incentive, as well as make a contribution to your OPEB plans. So overall, financially, I think you're in a sound position. So if you have any questions regarding the audit process or results, I'd be happy to answer them.
So I know several of us actually sat on the audit committee and met with your staff, and is very pleased to hear the good news. I see no one wishing to speak, so, yes?
Yeah, I'll just say a quick word. Sure. As head of the audit committee that trustee Padberg had mentioned, we had previously met with the representative of your firm, I think John Dominguez.
Right, he's one of my audit partners, yes.
Right. And so we went over, you know, the comments, observations that you had for us. I think I wanted to congratulate our district financial staff, Deborah Fitzsimmons, Kim McCord, I'm not sure who else is out here, but the entire staff, I think, has really done an excellent job of making certain that our, you know, financial statements are in good shape, that they're properly stated, and, you know, I think we obviously owe a debt of gratitude and should be grateful for the terrific job that they're doing.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the audit report as presented in Exhibit A of 6.1? Okay, moved by trustee Jay.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Mel Checker. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay, let's vote on the item. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one student advisory vote and one trustee absent. Okay, 6.2. We have to go through each item separately.
Okay. I don't have any further comments. If you have any questions on any of the other audit reports that I can answer, but we also rendered unqualified opinions on those. We did have some recommendations for the foundations. You'll see those in each of the reports.
Okay, so the recommendation is that the board accept the Saddleback Foundation, Irvine Valley College Foundation, and the ATEP Foundation, and the Saddleback College fiscal year audit reports, in the reports. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Trustee Mel Checker moved the item. Trustee TJ Pendergast seconded it. Any comments or questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with one student advisory yes vote and one trustee absent. So we'll now go to 6.3. This is the retiree OPEB trust annual audit report, and that was a part, okay, of all of the audit work.
I would like to say something, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say for the sake of the audience and for the board that this is our first year that we've had the OPEB trust annual audit report, and we're very pleased that we are doing an annual audit for the OPEB trust. It's a large sum of money, and that they conducted the audit, and that we did get an unqualified opinion. We did present this to the Retirement Board of Authority also last week, who also reviewed the audit report. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Pendergast moves to accept the audit report in Exhibit A. Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Wright. So let's vote on the item. Okay, matter carries unanimously with a student advisory yes vote and one trustee absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go back to the main part of the agenda, which was, I think we were at reports, board reports. So we'll start with trustee Jay.
No further comments. Thank you.
Trustee Mel Checker.
Okay, first, I wanted to recommend to everyone the new online format of the board, the board agenda that's online now. It's easier to navigate, and I've been getting the agenda online for two years, and I really enjoy this report. It will be, the new format will be utilized for everyone, and also they'll put the old PDF board agenda online, too, if you like the old one, so don't worry about that. In addition, you can go back to former agenda items, or former meetings, and look at the former agendas and actually see the board reports, see the different presentations, the PowerPoint presentations, when you were able to read the agenda items at the same time. I did a lot of interesting things this month in conjunction with my Board of Trustees job. I attended the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force meeting in, it's in Fults and College, because North Orange College, North Orange Community College District is the college district that is administering and running this particular program right now. So it's further away, but we don't have to do it. So that's pluses and minuses. And it was very interesting. We're working further on helping veterans have a better, this is actually, we're working with our congresspeople, having veterans have a better opportunity going through the community colleges, going to the local community colleges and not having to pay out-of-state tuition, and issues such as that. I also attended the Saddleback College Veterans Center dedication. That was wonderful. Several people afterwards mentioned to me how much they thought it was really heartrending to have our former veteran students come back and talk about the successes they've made, some of them there in law school, and talk about how Saddleback College and the Veterans Center was so key and so important to their future careers. And then we had several Board of Trustees forums, and many people came, and I thank the people that came. I also attended a meeting, Community College League of California. I don't know how much time I have left.
You're over.
I'm over my time, okay. That I'd like to talk about, but perhaps I'll have time to talk about it at the next meeting. So thank you.
All right, trustee Pendergast.
I attended the IVC veterans ceremony. I was not able to make the Saddleback one. I'm sorry, I just got to teach. But, you know, I'm sure it was nice, and it's really always a pleasure to celebrate the veterans. It's unfortunate it's only one day, but some of us try and do that more than once. And then the forums were well-attended, and especially here, Saddleback was, I guess, proportionally larger, because it's a larger institution, but it was a very nice turnout at both sites, good discussion at both sites. Lastly, just by next meeting, I will not have the tribute to Hedley Lamar, and I will be having shade for Movember, but if it's not too late to donate, if you go to us.movember.com, you can donate to support research for men's health. Thank you.
Okay, well, without wanting to be redundant, I participated in many of the items just previously mentioned, the two college board forums, and the veterans event at Irvine Valley College, as well as at Saddleback College, and worked with the audit committee and met with our auditors, which was a nice full morning, but it was very worthwhile and very rewarding. So with that, I'm going to move on to trustee Wright.
After the last board meeting, I also attended many events. The first event was the K-12 partnership breakfast at Saddleback College that I thought was very well-done. It's a wonderful partnership with the K-12 that Saddleback College has. And then also, that same day, I attended the ceremony on the Saddleback College paramedic graduation. We had 32 graduates, which I thought was good, so that was a nice event. Just a couple other things I'd like to mention. I attended both the Veterans Day ceremony at IVC, and then also the Saddleback College Veterans Center dedication in open house. Both events were very well-attended, and they were both wonderful events. Attended both the district forums. Again, I look forward to those. Those are good events. And then also attended two football games at Saddleback College. We won the first one and lost the second game, so it was a, it's always fun to go and watch football. I enjoy that in the fall. The last thing I wanted to comment on, I also attended the Community College League of California, the CCLC Annual Convention. It was held from the 21st through the 23rd of November in Burlingam, California. It was at the Hyatt Regency up by the airport. It was a wonderful event to hear what's going on in the education at the community college, to listen to and have significant education policy conversations. It was a good meeting. The one thing I want, there were just a couple of things I just wanted to kind of highlight about the next 20 seconds that I have. One was that the Chancellor Bryce Harris, he gave a wonderful report on the community colleges in California. He says, "The thing we need to stress right now is restoring access and enhancing success and staying focused." And then the last thing I wanted to mention was the baccalaureate degree. I attended that session. Again, we were asking, "What is California's future?" And the legislature is responsible for this, and so we need to study it. There's actually been a study group, has been formed, and they'll be coming out with the recommendations in December. The one area that they're looking at as possible is the nursing program.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Lang.
Yes, I have no formal comments tonight, but I did just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, very good. Student trustee Robinson?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate the IVC women's volleyball team for their success in the regular season and receiving the number-one seed for the regional playoffs. I also congratulate the Model UN team at IVC, and also the Saddleback Architecture Department on the AIA Scholastic Award. I was really glad to see such a large consensus of gratitude for the sacrifice and contribution of our military personnel at the Veterans Success Celebration. My father served as a Air Force captain during the Vietnam conflict, so I'm quite sensitive to recognizing the accomplishments of veterans and the benefit to the community. It's encouraging to see the expansion of this commitment to vet success via the memorandum of understanding that both colleges earned, and I think that this program will ensure the achievement to these student soldiers. Thanks.
All right, and chancellor's report.
I'd like to reiterate a comment that I made at the board forums that were held about two weeks ago, and that is that as I observe the climate within our district over the last couple of years, I've seen a vast improvement from where we were in the past. And I think this is particularly important for us as we try to move forward as a district, and we have integrated efforts to improve the programs that we offer to our students. And I'd like to urge continued work, continued work on improving these relationships. On another topic, the board continues to have a high level of interest on student success initiatives and our progress on those. At the last board meeting, we heard a report from Saddleback College about their high school partnership program, which is helping to improve the readiness of students as they enter our programs. In the future months, I have talked to the presidents, and we're going to have additional reports, this time focusing on what we've done new since the task force recommendations were made public. So we look forward to those reports. They'll begin in January.
Okay, president Rockmore, your report.
Well, thank you very much, President Padberg. I have just two things. One, I want to thank all of the trustees for attending the Veterans Day ceremony held at IVC. And one thing not mentioned here tonight is that our keynote speaker was trustee and veteran James Wright, and did an absolutely excellent job representing veterans in his comments, very important to us. Thank you very much. Also, and to go partly to what our chancellor has said, is that IVC is now offering a program called Freshman Advantage, and this is one example of our efforts to collaborate with our sister college, Saddleback College. They were the ones that began this program. It's a matriculation and priority enrollment program modeled after the Student Success Task Force recommendations. And so we're very happy to join them in that, and we're collaborating with our colleagues in making that happen for our students as well. Thank you very much.
All right, president Burnett, Saddleback College.
Thank you, Madam President. And in keeping with student success of Dr. Rockmore and our chancellor Portner mentioned, I'm very pleased to report that last week, Saddleback College approved its year-long efforts for creating a college-wide student success committee and further organizational structure that really brings our whole college together in a way that benefits us to move forward on student success. So I would like to thank especially the leadership of our academic senate and our faculty who really led this effort over the last year, in working with our management and our staff and our students to create this. You'll hear more about that in the future coming up, and maybe that would be a good report for us to come and talk to the board at some point. With that said, it's the time for events, and first off, I'd like to thank all the board members, the chancellor, and everybody else for attending our veterans celebration. It really was very special, and your attendance made it that much more. I would also like to thank the board and the chancellor for a terrific district-wide forum, which was held here, as mentioned, and was very positive, and certainly a lot of great questions and good dialogue, so thank you for that. Last Friday, our district services and our, I'm sorry, it was a week ago from Friday, our district services and Saddleback College's entire managers and administrators went through emergency operations center training. This is required training of all administrators and managers. It's an eight-hour training, and we all went through that. So just so the board knows that our sister college and us and our whole district are working on emergency planning and preparedness for the safety and welfare of our students and our community. Finally, there are two big important events coming. First, we have our Feast of Lights, as you know, our annual event, holiday event with our choir and our orchestra, and that's the weekend of December 7th and 8th, and I encourage you to attend. And finally, next board meeting in December 16th at 4:00, the community and everybody's invited to join the board and our chancellor for official groundbreaking of our new sciences building, 4:00 PM out at the site. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. And we are now at board request for reports, and we have two items. One was requested by trustee Mel Checker, and one, I don't recall who requested the one on the security cameras.
Jamal.
Oh, trustee Jamal. And as far as I know, we only have them at Saddleback, but if there are any plans for Irvine Valley, I think they should be included in this report. And the chancellor has reported to me that these can both come back without any difficulty at the next meeting. So with that, I think the board is supposed to act on these and approve them.
I'm going to approve both.
Okay, you wanted to do both? Okay, moved by trustee TJ Pendergast, and seconded by trustee Dave Lang. All right, so let's vote on the item then. Carries unanimously with one student advisory yes vote and one trustee absent. Very good. So we are now at 4.1, and there are no discussion items. We'll move on to 5.1, Consent Calendar. Are there any items to pull from the consent calendar? My goodness, this must be a record.
Move of the consent.
All right, moved by trustee Lang and seconded by trustee Wright. So with that, let's vote on the consent calendar. Carries unanimously with a student advisory yes vote and one trustee absent. Wonderful. So we are, we've done 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, we're at 6.4. And that's contract with Nudessic for software development, and who is going to present this? Okay, looks like Bob Brubisky.
Nudessic is a familiar contractor for us. They will be working primarily on the waitlist, but also on some lesser items such as the EOPS system.
Okay, so this is an item for approval. So any comments or questions from the board members?
None.
Okay, moved by trustee Jay.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Lang. Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak. Pardon, oh, sorry, you need to push your button. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Wright didn't come up on my screen. Thanks.
Just, what are you planning on doing with waitlists? Is it going back to the old format, or?
No, this is because the perception is that the priority add list did not meet everyone's needs, so this is being redesigned from the ground up with heavy faculty involvement.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with one student advisory yes and one trustee absent. So we are now at 6.5, and this is board policy revision for review and study.
Move for review and study.
Trustee Lang moved it, and seconded by trustee Wright. Comments or questions about it before we vote? Okay, let's vote on the item to accept it for review and study. Carries unanimously with one student advisory yes vote and one trustee absent. 6.6 is board policy revisions. This is for approval of several policies. So any comments or questions about policy 13613540855230, and that's it. Moved by trustee Lang. Seconded by trustee Wright. Comments or questions? Seeing none. Okay, let's vote on the item. Okay, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with a student advisory yes vote and one trustee absent. 6.7, this is Academic Personnel Actions, and we have a replacement page. I'm going to let Vice Chancellor Bouguet explain that.
There's a replacement page for item C1, and the replacement page was provided at the dais. That was mislabeled. B1 should be C1. And in that, we pulled all the department chair stipends because we're looking at a review of that, and they'll be coming back forward to the board of trustees at the December meeting.
So this one page you gave us replaces seven?
Yes.
Okay, and so the others will come back at the next meeting. Does everyone understand that? Who got the replacement page?
Well, it replaces C1, yes.
Oh, okay, is that not all? Okay, I'm sorry. How many pages were C1? It was several pages. C, it goes into... Okay, goes to...
Yes, up through page seven.
Through page five, seven? No, D, we get into...
Yes.
D is six, page six.
Correct.
So five, first five. All right, so...
Move approval with the change.
All right, moved by trustee Lang. Seconded by trustee Jay. With that, let's... Okay, one request to speak from trustee Prindergas.
Just clarifying, on the page seven of seven, Exhibit A, Academic Administrator Title Position Change for Barbo Blanchard, is this replacing Kathy Worley's position prior?
Yes, originally, although the position has been rewritten, and it has a new title now.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing no one wishing to speak, let's vote on the item. Okay, trustee, student trustee abstains. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, six yes votes and one trustee absent. Okay. 6.8, this is Classified Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes, okay. Okay, comments or... Trustee Prindergas, moved by trustee Jay.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lang. Trustee Prindergas has a question.
Yes, again, referring to a position change here for... Let me get it pulled up here. Dealing with the new system. Richard Morley. Is this in line with the presentation we had before on restructuring the foundation to try and bring in more people in order to generate more funds? Is that my understanding on this, is that you're creating an executive director position so that you can hire more people under? Is that, is this related, or what am I missing here?
Yes, no, it is related, but there's a lot more to it than that. It does come from the strategic planning work that was done by both foundations, and part of this...
What page is that on? Pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 20 of 25.
Twenty of 25, okay.
At the bottom. And so our colleagues at Saddleback went forward, first of all, to reclassify their director. The term executive director has been in the district in the past, many years ago. It tends to be a standard for foundation directors around the state to have a title like that. And it does position us to begin to build different positions beneath that that could be for alumni and other kinds of fundraising activities. And so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with, well, I'm sorry, with a student abstention vote, advisory abstention vote, and one trustee absent, so that's six yes. All right, we are now at 6.9, and that's Request to Resent Spring 2014 Sabbatical for Lisa Davis Allen. Move approval? Moved by trustee Milchecker, seconded by trustee Lang. Okay, any comments or questions? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with a student advisory yes vote and one trustee absent. Okay, we are now at 7.1, and these are our standard reports. This is on Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers that are... This is an information item only. Comments or questions? Seeing none. 7.2 is the Basic Aid Report, our standard report. Seeing no comments. 7.3 is... Exhibit A is a list of projects considered for local funding. Seeing no comments. We'll go to 7.4, Retiree Open Trust Fund. We talked about that a little bit earlier in our audit report. Seeing no comments or questions. 7.5 is Monthly Financial Status Report. Sort of went through that with our audit. 7.6, Quarterly Investment Report. Seeing no comments or questions. We are at 7.7, the SNCCCD Academic Year and Non-Resident Tuition Fees for Foreign and Out-of-State Students.
I'd just like to speak briefly on this item. We have promised the associated student governments that, at their request, that we always give advance information on the proposed fee prior to the board taking action, which normally occurs in the January board meeting, so that's what this item is. Not all the information is available, so we'll have more when we do the January item.
Okay, very good. Seeing no comments or questions, let's move on to 8.0, and these are reports from our constituent groups, so we'll start with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
In the spirit of the efficiency of tonight's meeting...
No report.
Oh, goodness. And we'll move to Faculty Association.
And I will give the same efficient report.
Oh, dear. Okay, Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
Well, in the spirit of faculty being verbose, I will announce that leaders of the academic senates at both colleges attended the statewide academic senate pleneries, and I think we all learned a lot, and we can talk about that at greater length at some other time.
All right, thank you very much. Associate Vice Chancellor Economic Development?
Thank you very much. Just a brief update. I'm pleased to announce that Tustin Ranch Road opened on Sunday. There are cars driving over the overpass and across Tustin Legacy, which now connects Valencia Avenue. I drove it today. The signal, it used to blink red for five years.
Yeah.
Actually is working with turn signals, and it's pretty amazing. So it's a huge, a huge, big boon to the area for development. We've made good progress on our current demolition, and basically it's finished. It finished up with rough grading, took off the green fences, and the open space, as you look at it now, kind of just rolling flat space, and it actually looks like it's ready to develop. We also hydroceded it, we put seeds across it, and fortunately, this rain might actually help those seeds to survive, so it might turn even a little bit green. Our next demo that we're working on, the Request for Proposals and Quotes, is in progress. We still have a little bit of work to do, and that'll probably go out on the street for bids in the first of the year. And then also, I'm pleased to announce that our current, if you look on bids, I think it's bid number 15, Request for Proposal Qualifications for our next major planning phase for ATEP is in progress. We have a number of vendors that have expressed an interest. That closes on about the 9th. And it's basically going to be a new document called the ATEP Master Development Plan that's focused on the site development, and this is a good thing for us to do now that with new land reconfiguration, we have truly more easily and more economically feasible spaces to develop, and we've got those big triangle spaces, or tangle, rectangular spaces to develop rather than that odd shape we had in the past. So we're looking forward to possibly getting that to the board in February for decision on a contractor. We'll race through that process, but carefully through the spring term, finishing in May, probably summer latest. So that's our update. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Vice Chancellor Technology, Bob Bravici.
There's an unprecedented alignment of forces from the White House to the House and Senate to state governments on the completion agenda, and we know that those folks are either drafting legislation or formulating new grant programs. So we want them to be aware of what we are doing and to view us favorably as they draft those new programs. So with the assistance of Terry Flugeman and our legislative analyst, Dana de Beaumont, we have been going around to see folks, both at the state and the federal level. At the state level, we've seen Vice Chancellor Eric Skinner, the Senate Ed Committee, that was Carol Lou's office who drafted the Student Success Task Force legislation, as well as the Assembly Higher Ed Committee and the Department of Finance. Last week, I was in Washington, DC, and there we spoke with members or staff members from the Senate Committee on Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions, or the Health Committee, that's under Senator Durbin's office, as well as the House Majority and Minority Education Committees, then over to the U.S. Department of Education, where we had meetings with the Deputy Assistant Secretary for Community Colleges, as well as the Director for the Office of Educational Technology. So we believe that they are, have a heightened awareness for the student success software programs that we have created here, and we anticipate some good things in the future.
Great. Okay, Vice Chancellor Bouguet, Human Resources.
Training helps move employees forward by giving them new knowledge or refreshing knowledge they hopefully have already had. We, I have two reports on training. One of them was completed with Academic Senate President Kathy Schmider and myself. We presented the tenure review process to all the deans of both colleges, and the best part about it was it was a two-way communication process. And yes, you'll be rest assured, Kathy Schmider is very verbose. However, to be honest about it, she is a very dedicated faculty member and shown like a star, really the best qualities of faculty in those presentations. The other one, too, is a phenomenal training program on probably one of the world's most boring topics that was done at Saddleback College in a very professional, profound way. President Burnett, Carol Hilton, and Chris Wilkinson did a phenomenal training job, the best I've ever seen, on the emergency training preparedness for eight hours, but they kept us awake the entire time and attentive. So it was wonderful, very well done, and Saddleback should be very proud of what they did there.
Wonderful. All right, Vice Chancellor of Services, Deborah Fitzpatrick.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that in a future board meeting, either December board meeting or January, we'll be bringing the final culmination of the HR and Financial Systems Software Procurement Project that included over a year's worth of RFP reviews, demos done by vendors, steering committee meetings to review results, inviting the demos, vendors back for additional demos of the products, business process analysis sessions that have taken place now for over a year in multiple topics in which we had district-wide and college participants all throughout the process. So finally, we, I have to say that this has been the most extensive and long procurement process we've ever had, I've ever taken part in, but it's been very thorough. So right now, the contracts are being reviewed by multiple people, including our district IT, the steering committee, our legal counsel. We have a lot of work we're still doing right now, so we'll see if we meet the December board meeting or not. But when we do, we'll provide a presentation of the software, how we came to the selection, and what it's going to be doing for our district and for the colleges, which will be phenomenal because we'll be able to take a lot of manual processes and time-intensive labor that's being spent on very tedious types of things, duplication, a lot of places for errors, into a very 21st century product that I believe will be able to support us for future years to come. So thank you.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate?
Vincent Cooper, Classified Senate President. Good evening, ma'am. I just want to wish everyone and your families a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. And CSEA President Scott Green.
Thank you, Madam President, board of trustees. As you know, since last April, I've been serving as the interim president of CSEA Chapter 586. Recently, we had our November chapter meeting, and as of last Thursday, I have now been elected as the president for 2014. So hopefully, I look forward to...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
I look forward to working with all of you and interacting with the district so that we can once again do what's best interest for both the district and CSEA. We also have trainings coming up that are going to be very vital for our members. We have a pre-retirement training that's coming up this March. We also have let our members know that there are some of those that have actually tried to email some of our members as far as fraudulent pre-retirement seminars that they are trying to hold and then, you know, take the money from our classified members. But we're getting that information out, and we're providing the information coming directly from the Orange Field Office. We also have other trainings for 2014, including the JobSteward trainings, the Site Rep trainings, as well as Know Your Rights. And one of the things that I will be doing in my first full term as president is I'm going to be reconvening the negotiating advisory committee so we can get ready for negotiations coming up for 2015. Thank you.
Great. All right, and our Saddleback College Classified Senate President, Mike?
Yes, hello, Mike Sauter, Classified Senate for Saddleback College. Just one thing to report on today. It is my honor to give you a report on the Fourth Annual Giving Thanks to Saddleback College Student Veterans Event that was held this last month. The Saddleback College community really came out this year to support our vets, and organization of the event, the canned food drive and the donations, was done by the Classified Senate. Two individuals, I'd like to recognize Craig Connor and Griselle Haredia, they did an amazing job, volunteered a Monday on a three-day weekend over vets to put these baskets together and then get ready to deliver to 46 vets and their families Thanksgiving baskets full with everything they're going to need, including a gift card to a grocery store for $60 to get the perishable items that they do need. And that could not have been done without the support from everyone at the college, from the president's office, the divisions, the faculty, the staff, the managers, even the students chipped in. And really, it was a touching, touching to see the vets receive the baskets. They started receiving the baskets last week. We have a press release that went out this morning, and in that, there was a link to some photos, and I will share that with you in an email, so you can get an idea of the impact that it did have. But thank you again for Saddleback, and happy Thanksgiving.
Wonderful. What a wonderful report. All right, I believe that concludes our meeting. So probably another record. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice Thanksgiving.